Yeah. Yeah. But, oh, it's so bummed down. Actually, thanks. It was a damn.
What's the plot? Cell phone ringer's off. Call to order, this meeting of the Cannon Beach Planning Commission. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove that we approve the agenda.
Second. Okay. Any objections to that, or can we approve that by consensus? I declare that approved. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? I have a couple of minor things that I emailed Mark about today. Not going to decide. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26th Planning Commission meeting?
Remove.
Second.
Can we approve that by consensus? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 21st Planning Commission meeting?
I'm a gentleman.
Second. Any objections? Approved by consensus. First order of business is a public hearing in consideration of SR 72-04 Van Beek. Is that correct pronunciation? Van Beek?
Yes.
At all, request for setback reduction in conjunction with a remodel at 179 West Surfcrest. Let's see. Did I have a cheat sheet beyond the agenda? I can probably do it out.
No, I understand.
You can ask that before I tell the story.
You can introduce the city manager while we're looking.
Yes.
Uh, I think he's gone out of the room. He's an old FBI that I would see him if people were here. Okay, I'll do that. Oh, let's see. Remind me. I ought to know how this goes, I have. It doesn't seem like I'm going to read this whole background.
No, you don't need to.
Now, there's some boilerplate that I don't have memorized.
At the back of the notice, there's a...
What's going to happen, Steve?
Yeah, I might be able to win with that.
If anybody's got any objections or corrections. As I go through this, you must... Is there a challenge to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear the matter at this time? Does any member of the Planning Commission... Has any... Oh. Does any member of the commission have a conflict of interest? Does any member of the commission have a personal bias in this matter? Has any member of the commission had any ex parte contacts on this subject? And...
Site visit.
Site visit?
Site visit.
Next, I'm supposed to indicate the criteria which apply to the action, which is... Let's see. Looks like this is the applicable criteria on... Or that... Somewhere in here, I talked about the fact that the... There are...
I can do the...
Information by the back door.
Yeah. I can do both the criteria and that part.
Looks like much of that information is in this first paragraph of the background. Let's go with that, and if there's some things I need to put in, I'll do that. The applicant property owner, Roy Van Beek, requests a setback reduction to accommodate extension of a roof over the front porch. Existing residence is nonconforming with respect to setbacks. The proposal would encroach further into the side street setbacks on north and west. The property is in the city's residential moderate-density R1 zone. Minimum street-side setbacks from new construction in the R1 zone are 15 feet per view. Knowing ordinance 17.12.040B. If I'm going out of what I should be talking about at the moment, let me know. The subject property consists of a 55-foot-by-50-foot lot at the southeast corner of Pacific and Surfcrest. Original dwelling was built around 1949. No more modern additions are added. I noticed it looks like it's undergoing a lot of work at the moment, at least on the outside. Survey records indicate that the substandard lot was created prior to 1969 and therefore didn't have to be built according to the requirements. Existing house is about 12 feet from the north property line, abiding Surfcrest as close as forecourt from the west property line, abiding Pacific. Minimum setbacks on the street side to this corner lot are 15 feet. Let's see. This is sounding like stuff...
Yeah, you don't have to read that. No.
Okay. I think... Why don't we go ahead with your summary of the situation, and when we get back with the boilerplate, I'll go back to that.
That works. This is SR 1704. It's a setback reduction request at 179 West Surfcrest. As you mentioned, the minimum setbacks on this corner lot are 15 feet on both street sides. The existing house is about 12 feet from the north property line, the Surfcrest side, and about 4 feet from the west property line, the Pacific street side. The applicant's requesting setback reduction to extend a porch roof in the porch along the Surfcrest street side of the house. The criteria for this are familiar to you from previous applications. They're in 1764-010, A1 through A8, and those are reproduced in the staff report along with some staff findings. The... On most of these, if you'll remember, you've heard a lot of these over the years, this year in particular. The view analysis in A2 is often the sticking point on these. And in this case, there's... You know, it's still an open question, as it always is. You haven't heard any testimony on this. So depending on what you do, you may want to ask for some more detailed drawings that will provide some of the additional information that you need to make that view judgment. Or you might decide that, based on the evidence you hear, that it meets it or doesn't meet it. And in either case, you can either approve or deny it, or continue this for additional information. If you do continue it, the 125, January 25th, is your next Planning Commission meeting. I'll tell you right off the bat that that's already a full agenda without anything being continued to it. So if you do continue something to a future agenda tonight, including this application, make sure the applicant understands exactly what you're looking for in the way of additional information. You also might want to consider cutting off oral testimony tonight and just asking for written material that addresses any deficiency you find. That's all I have.
Are we contemplating, since we have a full agenda for the next meeting, are we contemplating having a... Two meetings next month?
That's an option also.
I don't remember whether the things that... I don't think we've got anything scheduled for next time that could be pushed into a work session.
Yeah, well, we've scheduled three hearings on legislative proposals for 125, and that notice is going out tomorrow. So if you're contemplating changing that date, that's an option. Holding two meetings in January is an option also. So... Or, you know, just jamming a lot into one agenda. You can also... This is more agenda management rather than having anything to do with this, but if you do get to your meeting on the 25th and find the agenda's too long, you can continue some of those legislative public hearings to a downstream meeting without much penalty because those aren't subject to the 120-day requirement.
Okay.
But you wouldn't need to.
If we continue this, which I can imagine something that we might do, remind me what the sort of out-month situations are as far as... When we need to get this wrapped up?
There... This is already running late, so February 13th is when the 120-day clock runs on this. That would be before your normal February meeting.
So basically, we need to wrap it up next month, one way or another?
It would be nice to wrap it up in January, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Going back. This is a little different from what I'm used to seeing, but I think I can work with Indicate... Which indicates the criteria which apply to the action. Okay. That is that if someone gets up to speak about this, they must address the criteria which are... Can be found on one of the sheets by the back door there. Guess that's the front door, whatever it is, or the side door. In a manner that enables the applicant and anybody else involved to address those. I don't remember the exact wording anymore. Must be related to the applicable criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code that the person testifying believes apply. Failure to raise an issue in a hearing or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. This is quite what we were just talking about. City Council or the Planning Commission shall grant such... Shall grant such request by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence. Oh, okay. Thank you. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Okay. Then we have the staff introduction, and... Is there a statement from the applicant? Sure?
Yes, my name is Ray Van Beek, and I own this property down here with my wife and my children. We've owned it for over 25 years. My neighbor to the... My neighbor to the east was there when we moved in, and my neighbor to the south was there when we moved in. We've all been neighbors for many, many years. I'm very comfortable that they're not going to ever have any problems with what we're doing here. I wanted to clarify that we're not doing a remodel on this house. We had a bunch of flower boxes in the front of our home, and we discovered this summer that all of the siding on the home had dry rotted. We had sprinklers in there. The water ran in there, went clear down into the foundation. So what we're having done is having all-new siding, and in the process, we discovered that all of the windows had lost their seal, and they had water in the windows about this deep. So what we thought was just going to be a repair job turned into a major endeavor here. We... I submitted to Mark... I don't know if he gave that to you. In the process of talking to the contractor who's doing this work for us, and we haven't had anything that needed permitting up till now, he said I should get a survey, and I explained to him that my neighbor to the east had his house completely remodeled this last summer, and we do have the stakes on two corners of our property. I'm more than willing to do the survey, and I mentioned that to him, but I don't want to go to that expense until I get some reason to believe that we might... We might actually be successful in this. And what's happened is that we had to rip out the whole existing front porch, go down into the foundation, and we're pouring a new slab for the new foundation of the front porch. We have a very small cover on the front porch, and we ran across this advertisement. I don't know. Again, I provided copies of these, and we thought, why, wouldn't it be nice to have a cover over that front porch for when we come up in the summertime or in the winter when it's wet? Throw stuff under a cover there. Again, it's not something we contemplated as part of a big remodel. We're just repairing damage. We got dry rot all through the house, and we're getting very close to having it all repaired right now. And I guess I don't really have anything more to say that we didn't do a survey, and I explained that we're more than happy to do a survey if we have some reason to believe that this thing will work, but if it's not going to work, I don't want to spend more money because we're very candid with you. $400 just to have an application fee to have this hearing seemed to me to be pretty expensive, so... Especially after what's going down. But that's all I have, if there's any questions.
You need to say for the record what your mailing address is.
Oh.
I wasn't concentrating on that. I have been...
Oh, okay. That's good. Yes, my mailing address is in Portland. It's 3963 Southeast Pine Street, and that's in Portland, Oregon, 97214.
Thank you. Folks have questions?
So the porch roof that you have right now, does that not give you protection?
Well, I did include a picture of that, and it's a very small porch roof. It does give us some protection. We have nine children and two great-grandchildren that use that house. This porch is good for about two or three people. So that's basically what it comes down to.
I have a question that just occurred to me while you were talking, and it didn't occur to me as I was reading the material or looking at the house. Mark, if they were to put up supports for a canvas awning over that porch and put that up over... When they were going to be there over the summer or something like that, would that count as a further intrusion that needed anybody's permission to add it?
Assume this is one that kind of rolls up if you need it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Generally, we've not counted those as part of a structure or lot coverage. It's like an umbrella in that regard. So no, it would not... By my estimation, not count towards that.
And could I even ask for clarification of that? We've looked at those aluminum ones that just roll out, that you can attach right to the front of a house and then roll them back up.
What do you think?
Again, we've generally, if it doesn't require a building permit, we've not... We've treated it like you would an umbrella at a table in the yard, just as lawn furniture.
I doubt that that wouldn't.
Yes, that's my understanding, is that those don't. They're just something you buy at Home Depot and screw to the wall.
Uh-huh.
How far out does this roof extend at this point?
Um... How far does it extend now?
Over your porch.
It... I'm going to have to look here because this... The fellow I hired to do this did this for me. It looks like it extends out four... About four feet, and it looks to me like we'd be adding another three feet.
And making it much wider.
And making it wider, yes.
To encompass the window.
Yes, it goes across the window. But it would not go to the complete west end of the house. It would be very... What we anticipated is very similar to this advertisement we saw. It goes within a couple of feet of the end of the house.
But you're not contemplating putting a porch railing on, I gather?
We're not going to put a porch railing on, no. It is only less than a foot from up there, so there's not any falling issues or anything.
So I'm looking at the picture of the house on page four of six, and at the ground-covered area, page six of that... Six of six. And they don't seem to match.
I'm sorry?
They don't... Maybe I'm just confused, but they don't seem to match. If I look at the... This plot on six-six, I see an extended porch here in the front, and I don't see the section that shows on page four, which, you know, is this sort of three-story, you know, back section. I don't see that on this plan.
The picture on page six is just a footprint drawing, so it wouldn't indicate a second story, and it also doesn't include that little existing rooflet over the front door. And this is an older drawing that I found in history by location. I don't even know how old this is. So it also may not reflect some remodeling that's been done since then.
It's from a completely different angle, but it seems to me...
It looks like a bump out that is on the wrong side of the house, you know, at least from what we see in this photo.
Remember that the fence on the left side of the photograph by the hydrant is on the north side.
Yeah, and it's...
Yes, that's on the north side.
On that plot plan, that hydrant would be in the upper left-hand corner.
Very honestly, I don't know where this number six of six came from. I didn't...
Mark was saying he got it out of the city's files.
Yeah, it was an archival file. It's the best rendering of that site that I've got, short of a survey.
Oh, I see. So this is really... This is Surfcrest.
By the way, my neighbor to the west, his house is on my property, but it has been since we moved in there, and it's just... Was nothing you do about it, but...
To your west?
To your west?
I mean to my east. I'm sorry. Yeah, to my east. His house is...
Are you being forced to pay taxes on that?
I would like him to. To the east, his property was built many, many years ago, and it's actually partially four or five inches on our property, and he's always been worried about it, but there's nothing we could do anyway and nothing we would want to do, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have anything more? Thank you. Is there a statement by a proponent of this request? Is there a statement... I made a statement by an opponent of the request? That sounds like we are going to close the public testimony and proceed to discussion.
Well, first of all, we don't have any answer to A2, significant views of ocean mountains or similar features. We don't have any information to tell us how it's going to impact the neighbor's record to the east. So that... We can't... I don't see how we can make a decision without that information. That's number one. Number two, I'm puzzled because I didn't think E, where they asked for a lot with an unusual configuration, I'd never imagined that just meant a corner lot. But that's... I mean, if that was true, then there would be... Every square block would have four lots with unusual configuration. I don't think that's what they're referring to when they say unusual configuration. And there's no discussion in here about F, rehabilitation or reasonable alternatives don't exist. And those are the two that are cited in this application, E and F, as justification for requesting the side yard setback, the setbacks. So I just, at this point, without answering those questions, it seems that we are not in a position where we can make an informed decision.
I have another question. I was looking at the description sheet, and I'm not clear how many square feet of living area there is in this house already.
I was wondering the same thing, too. I can't tell that.
I mean, we know what its base...
Where the footprint is.
Footprint is, but...
Right. But how many square feet of actual living area?
Right.
Why do we care?
Because this is a lot that's probably not supposed to have more than 40%.
Okay, that's kind of two separate questions there. You're thinking of criteria A1, and that's not a living space question, it's just a lot coverage question. So in a two-story house like this, they won't be the same.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
So I've got a floor area ratio?
Yeah, what's the floor area ratio?
I don't know the answer to that.
It is...
By sort of rules of procedure here, we may ask you up to clarify some of these things, but at the moment, we haven't. Thank you. I have an opinion on this, but I don't... I think it would be appropriate for me to wait until everybody else has had to say. And I think I interrupted somebody to say that.
I think I agree with you. I'm having a hard time really seeing the... It's already out of compliance of history, and it's going to be more out of compliance.
Hank?
Well, I'm having a difficult time trying to figure out why you need that much of an extension when you already have a four-foot cover on the porch that's there now. And yes, you would be infringing on more of the property if you extended it the way the preliminary drawing is.
Anybody else before I...
Well, I got... The reason I asked about, you know, what the floor area ratio is, is that when I went to this lot and you looked at the house on it, this is a pretty stuffed lot, I thought. And we really don't have any sense of just how big this house is on paper here, how many square feet there actually are, you know, the living space in this building. And the other part of... You know, and that structure is large enough that it already comes out evenly. If you look down Surfcrest, it already comes out evenly with the other houses on the block. And while it's... I don't know what is an extensive loss of view, according to our non-definition of that, but it is going to... You know, this addition is going to obstruct some views. And the other thing it's going to obstruct is the traffic going around that corner is going to potentially be... The vision around that corner is going to be obstructed somewhat, too. And I think that's why we have setbacks like we have on corners. That's why it makes corner lots sort of a pain to build on because you get hit on two sides by a wide setback. But there's a reason for it, and that is that, you know, traffic can see, you know, something that's coming easier than if you had it, you know, sitting on the property line.
It seems to me, just as far as this is... It seems to me, just as far as the specific discussion goes, unless you were driving a semi or something, you wouldn't be at a point where the porch roof was going to interfere with your visibility looking around the corner. I mean, I suppose there are semis that-
Well, and there are things that get put on porches and, you know, there's a reason why we have setbacks. And, and this house is built out into the setbacks already, and I don't see justification or extending the problem. Especially if there's, you know, a possibility of, you know, of one of these, you know, solar rollout, you know, you know, instant porch and, you know, and most beautiful life in, you know, around Phoenix, you know. I just, I just don't see why we're even talking about extending a house that's already a large house for the lot into the setbacks even more.
Okay, my, my opinion is essentially in agreement with Joe's, and I think that Mr. Van Beek was wise to get a feeling for our position. I don't see, it does not seem likely to me that getting more documentation would convince us that we ought to approve this, and that he, he was wise to take the temperature of the commission and see whether it was worth getting more documentation to, to go ahead with this. I, I think that we're not going to end up approving it.
It's a substandard lot, and I think that serves it all. I am curious about a survey, because I think it'd be interesting to see how the other houses are sitting on your lot, all of that, but I would hate for you to spend more money, because it does have a capacity on the lot that is over what would be allowed also.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, I, I move that we deny this request.
Second. Further discussion? Do we have a roll call?
Chair Robert Lundey?
Yes, usually the chair goes last.
Oh, sorry.
That's, I'm prepared. I don't think that's going to come as a surprise.
Commissioner Charles Bennett?
I agree.
Commissioner Joe Burrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Janet Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Robin Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry Johnson?
Yes.
Chair Robert Lundey?
Once again, yes. Okay, moving on from there. Thank you. Okay, second order of business. Public hearing and consideration of P-17-01 OTAC Inc. request for a partition for two lots located on North Hemlock Street. This should be, this is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding what I just said. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Has any commission member made a site visit?
Yes.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is, this is a partition request. Your code requires sets up a two-step process for approval of a partition, which is a division of land. One, the first step is approval of a preliminary plat, and the second step is approval of a final plat. So we're at the first step here, the preliminary plat. You don't do a lot of partitions each year. You can tell that, we're in the last month of the year, and this is number one for nineteen, for 2017, nineteen seventeen. This is for a downtown lot that's already fully developed, so we're not sort of creating new development by doing this. The applicant can explain their reasons for doing this. There are a lot of reasons why you might want to divide lots, property up downtown that has multiple buildings on it, as I'm sure you can imagine. The staff report's longer than most of the other staff reports here, because there are a lot of criteria for partitions that you especially need to address when you're creating basically the potential for a new development. That's not really in play here, so most of these are irrelevant, but I put them in the staff report because, basically for the sake of completeness. You have an eleven-by-seventeen version of the proposed division in your packet. I have a larger format version here, if anybody needs to see a little more detail or just prefers a larger version. We recommend approval of the proposed plat. That will start them on the road towards finalizing it. If they get there, the chairman of the planning commission will sign the final plat, assuming that it conforms exactly with, if you do get to approval tonight, with what you've approved. That's all I have in the way of a staff report.
Okay, is there any additional correspondence?
None on this item.
So on parcel one, that twenty-nine-fourteen square feet, that includes the second floor of that, that building?
Yeah, there's no proposal to condoize these years, so it would be both floors.
Yeah, and so there could, there could be two different businesses.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, now the boilerplate. Pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Municipal Code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure or to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Dale Barrett with OTAC Inc., forty-two fifty-three A, Highway one oh one north, Gierhard, Oregon, on behalf of Harriet and Jean Cope, the owners of the property. It's a fairly straightforward partition, as indicated in staff's report. Originally, these were portions of two lots, fourteen and a portion of Lot fifteen, Block forty-one at Seal Rock Beach, that was recorded in about eighteen ninety. We had previously adjusted a lot line on the north side of these properties back in about nineteen, I believe, eighty-nine. At that time, the owner was George Vedder, and three existing structures were on this remaining property here, as you see it now. The Copes have now determined that they wanted to separate the most southerly parcel here, which is the one, and building on parcel one, and that's the twenty-nine thousand one hundred, or two thousand nine hundred and fourteen square foot parcel. So it's going to be on its own lot, so it'll be separate from the other two. The other two will be a single ownership, and that one will both stay in the same ownership. So the eleven-by-seventeen exhibit map that you see, which is a small version of this, you see the area that we have shaded in a light green right there. That area will become an easement for ingressy grass, for pedestrians. We have existing utilities in that area. There's some sewer lines, telephone power, that kind of a thing, and a little bit of downspouts going to that area. So that will be a common area, if you will, between these two ownerships that they'll have to coordinate on, and any maintenance that'll be done will be done by the parties that own that, probably both ownerships. We have one lot that has forty-one foot of frontage on Hemlock Street, and that's parcel number one. And we have the second lot, parcel two, has thirty-five feet of ownership on Hemlock Street. Minimum is twenty-five, twenty-five foot of frontage, so we more than exceed that. As you can also see in the upper portion of our map, there is a building lot coverage ratio up there.
Where is that?
Right at the very top. So it's building lot, coverage ratio, the minimum standards is that the building coverage to the lot size be at least a point seven. And we matched that on the parcel number one. If you see, it's a point six nine six coverage, or point seven, and on parcel two, it's a point six oh, which we're underneath that. So we meet those standards. Again, it's, it's pretty straightforward. There's nothing, no new construction is proposed here, the utilities are all in. There isn't anything planned for tearing down a building or, or anything like that, so no new development at this time. There'll be the normal maintenance, buildings, sides, remodel, those kind of things as normal wear and tear, but that's the only thing I'm aware of. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you.
Are there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? Okay. Is there a staff response or further comment?
Nothing here.
And since the applicant just sat down, I'm guessing that he doesn't have any additional comments to make. Everybody? There has been no request for a continuation, so I am hereby closing the public hearing and moving to consideration. Don't everybody speak first.
I think that Dale did a beautiful job on that, and the only thing I'd want to say that I would hope we could do is that we require that there be no new development on this if we approve that. Yes. Because it says that they're not-
In, in principle, it seems, I think, since the floor area ratio in the, for parcel two, it's got some, some room to grow, it's imaginable that they could add something on there. I don't remember, Art and Gallery has- Has something over it, doesn't it? So I don't know where they are on, on floor area.
Was it floor area ratio or lot coverage?
Yeah, lot coverage, they've got a little room to grow.
Yeah.
I don't know whether they, whether we need to-
The larger of the two lots theoretically could add a small amount of space.
But it says right here, they're not planning on it, so I guess I take it that they were-
So they, you would not expect them to have any objection to that condition being put on.
I guess we could hear from them if they, yes.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, would you come back up to the lectern and, you're not required to-
Well, I-
...
Yeah, I would think that through your normal planning process, you're allowed to add a little bit more if you can meet the criteria. So I guess I don't understand why you would restrict the one lot that was under, why a future owner couldn't at least do what you can do right now.
Well, it's just said so many times in your proposal that that's the case, that I thought it would be nice to understand what you're saying by-
Well, again, there, right now, there's no plans to demolish anything, build new buildings and whatnot. It all, whether you do that or not, it all has to meet your current planning guidelines, which is the lot coverage ratio. I guess I don't understand what the objective would be to restrict them down, what they couldn't normally do.
Partitions are unique situations, so I guess that's, and I'm only one of many, so.
The one, the one, yeah, the one parcel is already at that building ratio, but, you know, for example, with the Sea Lark, if it were to catch on fire and burn down, then do you really want to restrict it down less than what's allowed by its current zoning? I think it would be prudent to leave that option in there to redevelop up to its potential.
I guess the question is, why didn't you put it in the applications? That there was no new development, you know, that was the-
I don't think, I did put it in the application, I just discussed it here, that no proposed development, and we proved that the lot coverage ratio is within the standards.
So we take that out, then? No, no new development, because we don't know.
There, there is no new development planned at this time.
Right, today.
I mean, if we, if we had a plan that we were going to demolish a building, I think that'd be appropriate to tell you we're going to do that, and then we would build it up to whatever your code allows. But that's not the purpose of the partition at this time, it's just to separate the ownership of the southerly building. I think fairly simple. Once you create the lot or the parcel, then it's considered two legal lots of record. The owner may choose to keep it as long as he chooses to keep it, or he could sell one or both, or whatever comes up, you know. As you get older, sometimes you want to sell your, your commercial properties and you need the money. That's what the case is here, that we're separating one building from the other two, so each could be sold separately. You cannot sell them unless you separate the ownership. That's really what we're doing.
So Robin is thinking that you could sign out of these buildings? Okay.
Thank you.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, Hank is nodding, for, for the record here. Other comments or questions? Anybody feel that they're ready to make a motion?
I move that we approve the proposal.
Whether or without Robin's condition.
Without.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Bennett? Thank you. Is there further discussion? Okay, Samantha?
Commissioner Charles Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Janet Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Robin Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry Johnson?
Yes.
Chair Robert Lundey?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, there you go. You're welcome. Next order of business, public hearing and consideration of V-17-02, request by Mike Clark for a variance to the minimum allowed off-street parking spaces in conjunction with the rebuilding of the Sea Lark Apartments at one-two-four North Larch. The applicant, let's see, yeah, I think that comes here. The applicant, Mike Clark, is seeking a variance to allow three fewer off-street parking spaces than is required by Municipal Code Section seventeen point seventy-eight point zero-two-zero-point-D. Property is located at one-two-four North Larch, tax lot five-one-zero-one-nine-D-D, map four-six-zero-zero, and is in a residential high-density R-three zone. This property is owned by Coaster Properties. In accordance with Municipal Code Section seventeen point seventy-eight point zero-two-zero-point-D, the proposed dwelling would require ten off-street parking spaces- the proposed dwelling would require ten off-street parking spaces. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the Municipal Code Section seventeen point eighty-four point zero-three-zero, variances, criteria for granting. This is, again, a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding that. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Has any commission member made a site visit? Yes?
Yes.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a parking variance request, an off-street parking variance request. You've heard other variances this year, but you've not heard any parking variances. They have a separate set of criteria, different from the other variances that you've considered this year. Those criteria, in your staff report, there's three of them, and then A three, the third criteria, actually has sort of three parts to it, so those are explained in the staff report. The proposal involves a multifamily dwelling, which would be rebuilt at the site of a previous multifamily dwelling. As a multifamily dwelling, this requires review and approval by the Design Review Board, so I know at least one of you has been on both Planning Commission and Design Review, so you understand kind of the separation of powers here. The Design Review Board is charged with looking at the design-related parts of this project. In this case, you're looking at just the parking variance, not the design-related part of the project. If you do approve this in some form, when it goes to the Design Review Board, we'll have the same discussion there. They're entitled to review the design of the proposal, the parking question will have been settled at that point. There's a fair amount of discussion in here about the affordable housing, workforce housing, what that means, and it's in there because it's important, kind of as background, I guess. It's also, I think, important in the future as the city goes down the path of trying to look at how we're going to accommodate affordable housing here. However, that is not a criterion for approving or denying the variance tonight, so it's there as background and information for you, but it is not an approval criterion or relating to approval criterion directly. Everybody here is aware that there's also an amendment going forward, a code amendment going forward simultaneously with this, that you've had a work session on and have scheduled for a meeting in January. I communicated with you via email this week about this, and I just wanted to repeat what I said mostly for the benefit of the audience, too. So those are two separate items at this point. You directed me to put that, that package of amendments on the January twenty-fifth agenda, which I've done, so that'll be before you for a public hearing at that point. That has a life of its own, public hearing, it's a legislative matter, it's not subject to the hundred-and-twenty-day requirement, your action on that will be a recommendation to the City Council. The amendment affects potentially many properties in town, in the R-three zone especially. So that's why it's legislative, it affects many properties, many potential property owners. All of that is familiar to you from other legislative matters. This, on the other hand, is a quasi-judicial matter, affects a single piece of property, it's a very narrow request regarding off-street parking. Although, you know, there's obviously a relationship here because they kind of originated in the same project, but they are two separate decisions, and you will have to handle them as two separate decisions. They all each have their own criteria, their own life, and at least for tonight, they're scheduled separately. So please keep that in mind as you, as people testify, that they may go off track and talk about the amendments. You're fine to let them do that, but really, we're only hearing the variance tonight, not the amendments. There is a piece of additional correspondence on this, email from Patrick Nofield, it should be a copy of it on dais in front of you. One of the, if you do get to approval on this, one of the requirements for the number of units they're proposing, which is linked to the number of parking spaces they're asking for, is the deed restriction on the property, and it's reflected in condition number one there. So if you do get to approval, please look at that condition. That's all I have in the way of staff report.
Okay. Remind me, if we were to continue this, what are we looking at as far as the calendar is concerned?
This, the hundred-and-twenty days would run on March twenty-first.
So it would have to get to final decision by February, February or March meeting?
Yeah, decision that your February Planning Commission would be pushing it, because if that's appealed, it'll be too late to make the March City Council meeting, so you're kind of forcing the City Council into a special meeting at that point, something they don't like. I wanted to look at my schedule to figure out when that March Planning Commission meeting would be, and it's twenty-second March.
Maybe I'm getting slow, but what would be the consequence if we were to continue this, since, let's see, we heard about this in a work session, but this is the first public hearing on it, right?
Well, you haven't heard about this in a work session, this is the first, the work session covered an amendment, which is not on the schedule tonight.
Right.
The amendment is going to be heard at your January twenty-fifth meeting. This is a separate application.
Okay. I'm pretty sure we had some discussion of this in Mr. Bartle's...
The amendment did address, yeah, the amendment definitely addressed parking spaces, among other things, and some of the testimony, the written testimony provided by the applicant for this is, in some respects, the same as the discussion you had at the work session from the applicant's agent. But they are separate items, you need to consider them separately on their own merits. I'm sorry, I gave you the March Planning Commission, the February Planning Commission is February twenty-second.
Ah, okay.
That was the one I was reaching for.
Got it. Okay, so I'm just trying to unravel this a little bit, that since this is the initial public hearing, if there were to be a request for a continuance, then we would be required to grant that.
Correct, yes. And then you'd have to decide whether to put it on the prior January agenda or the February agenda.
Thank you. Okay.
So, no, I have a question. So has the city studied parking spaces used in the city, other than the one that Reymar presented on low-income housing?
Yeah, there's a, I briefly touched on the results of that survey that the City Council did last year on, in the downtown area, and those were some preliminary results that were reported to the City Council, so I cribbed that information and discussed that a little bit in here, but nothing beyond that.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a different kind of study than the one that Reymar reported on, he was looking at occupancy in a private parking lot. The City Council's study was looking at on-street parking occupancy and turnover. Yep, they're different, but related topics.
Yeah. And I had an issue kind of like that, but if I can remember, it didn't have to do with ratio of parking places to dwelling units.
Not the city's project, no, it did not.
Let's see, we are, we have had the staff report, is there any additional correspondence that we don't know?
Just the one item from Nofield, the email that's in front of you.
Got it. This is the call for public testimony, the pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria, or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Municipal Code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The Planning Commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes. Ready?
You're up.
All right. So I'm Mike Clark, I haven't met everyone here, but that's who I am. And my address here in Cannon Beach is at the Coaster Construction Office at P.O. Box two-four-five, Cannon Beach, nine-seven-one-one-zero. I am the owner of Coaster Construction and Coaster Properties, and as mentioned in the staff report, the Sea Lark Apartments are one of the holdings of Coaster Properties, and as we all know, it caught fire last February quite dramatically and basically burned to the ground. So we're here tonight to discuss this request for a variance, but I wanted to just mention a few things about Coaster and housing that I have come up against in the last thirty-five years that I've been involved here in Cannon Beach. And that goes back to the dates of the, and this is short, that goes back to the dates of the RV Park, when I was involved in the RV Park, the Elkland Village Affordable Housing Project that was to the west, the duplexes that were to the north. And we built those in that project along with the RV Park, eventually sold the RV Park to the city. My family had buildings in town, but it was only after my father passed away that the issue of where people were going to live started coming to my attention, because as the owner of Coaster Properties, we have thirty-four retail commercial tenants, we have ten apartments, not including the four that burned down, and I talked to the tenants and the apartment dwellers, other people in town, including the Copes and the Vettors who were mentioned earlier, people in the hospitality industry, and it's been a real issue specifically in the last ten years when people that had homes have turned them into rentals and booted out the workforce. So I've taken it upon myself and our company, which include John Nelson at Coaster Construction and his son Joel, who also live here, to try to make a spot for the workforce. We've done that at, most recently at Sandpiper Square, where we took two commercial galleries on the second floor and turned them into apartments. One, we put Dan Grasik in there, the former Public Works Director, because he had no place to stay, and then after the fire, Dan volunteered to move out so that Patrick Lathrop, who runs the theater, could move into that spot. And Dan, we put up, thanks to Tom Drumheller and Patrick, who wrote the note, Tom and Patrick put him up for a month and a half in a Cannon Beach with a couple of nights at the Ocean Lodge. So it was very difficult to find people that would take in our four, folks that were displaced after that fire, but as is the case with this community, people stepped up and they're all in, they're all relocated at this time, and it doesn't mean that anything is going away as far as workforce housing or affordable housing. So I can tell you without any question that on an average month, my office gets three phone calls, that would either be here in Coaster, next to the RV Park, or it would be in Portland, but we get three calls from different people every month for probably the last ten years, who say, "We need a place that we can afford to live, and what can you do to help us? Can you direct us anywhere?" Because even though I had fourteen units, now ten, we are the go-to people to ask when it comes to workforce housing, because I also subsidize all the rents. If you live in my units, the rents are somewhere around seven-hundred dollars, to the most is ten-fifty, and the ten-fifty is a pretty nice unit. It's where Nick Nelson used to live in the other Sea Lark apartment. Sea Lark is two buildings, it's a fourplex and an eightplex. Dale Barrett is working now on splitting the property so that we can apply this deed restriction that Mark Barnes mentioned on the smaller portion of the property where the fourplex was.
I'm going to interrupt you a bit, I appreciate your assurances that this is going to be brief, but is this going to come around to parking spaces pretty soon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping me on point. It has to do with the density here and the fact that the building that burned down was only a fourplex, and in looking at options to rebuild it, the only option that we could come up with to rebuild it that would be affordable, based on the insurance proceeds and everything else, is an eightplex. And the eightplex that we've designed meets all the criteria of the, meets all the setback regulations that we have here, and the only thing it doesn't meet is the parking. As is mentioned, there are ten parking spaces required, there are only seven of them that are on the site. The previous project had eight parking spaces, but it didn't have ADA. And one of the things I mentioned when I started working with Reymar on this project was that there was no ADA parking, and therefore there was no ADA aisle. We have that now, we have an ADA unit. I'm not saying that we're going to go from seven to eight just because there's an aisle, I'm saying there's only seven spots available, and there's nothing else I can do. So in order for this project to go forward, we need to have seven parking spaces, we can't put ten there. We've looked at all the alternatives, meaning a sixplex and even rebuilding the fourplex, it just doesn't make any sense. So the, so where we are with the parking right now is that Reymar and I, and David Vanneta, who did the design work, and John, we looked at the area, we looked at the criteria that are required in this application for a variance, and basically, we feel that with the bicycle parking, with the makeup of the people that will be living in this apartment complex, that the parking is adequate at seven units, not, seven parking spaces, not ten. And Reymar has a couple of comments he wants us to make about that for the record, but that's where we are at the moment.
Any questions for Mr. Clark? Mr. Bartle is rising to my invitation for my question of whether there is anyone proponent of the...
Well, actually, I'm representing Mr. Clark.
Representative of the...
Yeah. My name is Reymar Bartle, I live at P.O. Box one-one-seven here in Cannon Beach. You have the application from Coaster Construction that provides evidence that we believe shows that your criteria met. I just want to touch on a few of those and then answer any of your questions. I would submit to you that the survey that the city did this summer of the actual cars that were parked at the two major multifamily housing projects in Cannon Beach, Shorewood, and Elk Creek Terrace is the best available information that you have about how many cars are actually required to support workforce housing. And that information showed that there was an excess of parking at both projects, and on balance, for every unit, only, there was only point seven cars parked in those lots. This proposal would meet that standard. Now, I know that's just one survey, and so I looked for con... And so I looked for comparable surveys to increase everyone's confidence that this is not an anomaly. As you can well imagine, it's difficult to find comparables for small communities. Usually don't run across those kinds of things. So the communities that I'm going to reference, they're larger, some of them are much larger. But the point I want to make is they all have the same finding, that cities' standards, which are very similar to the cities', over-require off-street requirements for workforce housing and lots of empty parking spaces as a result. Eugene did a study about 10 years ago, and as a result of that study back in 2009, they reduced their off-street parking requirement for studio and one-bedroom apartments to .67 parking spaces per unit for workforce housing. Mr. Clark is proposing studios and one-bedrooms, as you can see from the submitting. King County did an extensive study. They found 30% more parking required than needed. This is basically, we're asking a reduction of 30%. In Seattle, similarly, they recently studied 23 multifamily apartments, 37% too much parking. And really, I know it seems like a large city and a long way away, but San Diego did an incredibly comprehensive study of affordable and workforce housing. They actually looked at 137 projects. And they graded the amount of actual off-street parking based on variable factors with regard to transit and other things. And so the most un-transit-friendly locations, they found that half a parking space per studio and one bedroom was adequate. So I submit to you that, in fact, the survey that we presented in the application is a true reflection of the demand for off-street parking for workforce housing. In a different venue, a question did come up about the timing of when that survey was done. It was done in the evening, 8:00. And there was a question about whether that was a good time to be serving, surveying for maximum parking vehicle use. So I went back and took a look. And in fact, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is sort of one of the standards that people look at, for residential uses, peak parking demand occurs on weekday evenings. That's their baseline for when surveys are done. So I think the timing of the survey that was done this summer is in line with the appropriate standard. I think, you know, Mike mentioned briefly, but this is, this location relative to minimizing the need for vehicles is about as good as you're going to get in Cannon Beach. It's downtown, easy walking to a lot of services as well as a lot of employment opportunities. And then again, midtown, there's a lot of hospitality-type employment in this area. It's an easy five to 10-minute walk. So again, just because of the location and really the small size of Cannon Beach, I think that speaks to the ability to get by with less parking. The final thing I want to just, again, bring to your attention is that I know that when the Planning Commission deals with these kinds of things, you're concerned that the original intent of the project doesn't vary over time and you get something else. So Mr. Clark is prepared to record a deed restriction on the property with the eightplex on it that will prevent the property from being converted to condominiums or to be used for short-term rentals. And that deed restriction will be written in a way that it can't be altered without the city's approval. So in summary, we believe, we agree with the staff report that the relevant criteria have been met and encourage you to approve the application. I can handle any questions you might have.
I have a question about the survey that was done at Elk Creek and Shorewood. And maybe, I don't know, maybe Mark needs to answer this. Who did, I, who did this survey?
I did.
Oh, you did this, so this was by yourself?
Yeah.
You just went up, that was the survey? So you went up and just looked?
Well, it's pretty easy to do. I went at roughly 8:00. And they're both fairly small projects. There are, you know, 34 and 36 units. The parking spaces are easy to identify. I counted them. I counted the parking spaces. I counted the vehicles in the parking spaces. That led to those numbers.
At 8:00 at night in summer?
Correct.
I, I would say, if this ends up being extended, I would like an opportunity to actually take a look at those reports. I don't, I don't doubt your truthfulness about them, but I, my reaction to what we're reading here was that I, I wasn't seeing enough evidence that, that this was-- I was going on your survey, which was, again, I'm not doubting your truthfulness about it, but it seemed like sort of a limited basis for deciding that we were going to overturn the city's guidelines.
Well, you, of course, are welcome to make any decisions that you like. I think Mr. Clark would ask that if you don't think we met the burden of proof here, that you deny the application. Mr. Clark is in a situation--
Sure.
--with an insurance company. They have a clock.
Yes.
So if you are, if you are not--
Deal it to the city council.
This is the information we've brought to you. If, if you are not convinced by it--
Fair enough.
--then just, you know, make your decision based on this. We believe we've brought you the evidence to meet the standards.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Are there, are there presentations or additional presentations by proponents, depending on-- Mike was on his feet first.
I'm older than you are.
Please don't, I probably won't be on the evening--
Wherever you can get it, I don't know.
I'm sure that's the only reason anymore.
My, my name is Mike Morgan, P.O. Box 132, Cannon Beach. I'm, I want to testify based on my experience in Astoria. I'm currently a planning, a planner for the city. And interestingly, we're, we're looking at a workforce housing project right in the downtown area. So we've been doing some research of other apartments in, in downtown Astoria. One notable one is the Aster Hotel, the largest building in Astoria. And out of 66 units, we've, we found that there are 22 cars in the parking lot. And I think 18 of those belong to residents. The others are for, for the businesses there. And although it's not completely analogous, because it's not all workforce housing, a good number of the, the residents are. There's another apartment complex called the Sid All Apartments. And approximately one quarter of those, those apartments are, are occupied by people that own cars. I think in the larger scope, if we, if the city of Cannon Beach is serious about affordable housing, we've really, really got to do some things like this to make it happen. The last, I think the last affordable housing project that was built was Shorewood, and before that, Elk Creek Terrace. And we have, we have done studies, we've talked about it, there've been, there've been innumerable discussions about it, and nothing, nothing has happened in, in providing affordable housing in this city in the, in the recent, in the recent past. So I really think that, that you need to, you need to look at it in that, in that light. I think Chairman Lundey might have been quoted in the paper saying, "Why can't the businesses provide affordable housing?" And I think this is an example of where a businessman is actually stepping up to the plate and providing affordable housing for the workforce, not just his workforce, but for, for the workers in general in Cannon Beach. I think the, a book you might want to put on your reading list is "The High Cost of Free Parking" by Donald Shoup. It's published by the American Planning Association. And it goes into detail about how extravagant parking, the provision of parking is throughout the United States in comparison to other developed nations. And, and I think that, that sheds some light on, on what we're, what we're doing here. So I really urge you to approve this variance. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Morgan?
I have a question. I, I, can you tell me, what kind of variances were necessary for Elk Creek and Shorewood? Do you know?
None.
None? But there's successful low-income housing, right?
Right.
Workforce housing.
But there's more, there's more parking than is necessary there?
Well--
I mean, there's, there's, there're vacant spaces sitting there. That's the, that's the high cost of, of free parking. If it was the accurate number, then, you know, they should, they could have saved a significant, significant amount of money for, with a very, well, anyway.
But I thought you were implying that in order to have, in order to have workforce housing or low-income housing, it's necessary to, I mean, you don't have to have a variance of existing code to do it. It's still possible.
But the--
Elk Creek's a good example of that.
I don't think that's a good example. Elk Creek has innumerable three-bedroom units. I mean, it's totally not the same situation. I mean, we're talking about one-bedroom and studios here, you know? So why isn't, you know, and they're providing more than point, than one, one per unit. I mean, I, I think Reinmar's, Reinmar's data is absolutely right on. There's, you're paving paradise to provide parking that's not needed.
I guess I would, all right. I understand your position. I just--
I'm an, I'm an advocate. I have no dog in this fight. But I, I think we've really got to do something as a community to, to provide affordable housing. And for the record, I want to say that I am, I am the chair of the Design Review Board, but I'm, I have, I am not, I don't think that I can, I don't think I'm going to have to recuse myself from the decision on the, on the design, but if I have to, I will. But I think it's very important to, to look at the broader picture of affordable housing and where young people and workers that make 10 bucks, 12 bucks an hour can live in this town. Otherwise, we're just, we're just going to be like Hilton Head or Ploneton Beach or wherever.
Right. And I don't think that's the issue here. I'm just asking--
It is very much the issue.
Well, I'm asking you, is it possible to have successful low-income housing and workforce housing without a variance? Is that a possibility? It seems that it was a possibility at, both at, at the other two, you know, Elk Creek and Shorewood. So that's the only question I'm asking.
Every variance is judged on its own merits. That's a legal standard. In this particular situation, this is, this is a unique situation in a, in a dense urban setting, and, and in order to build eight units, it is, it is necessary. In Elk Creek Terrace, when we, and I, Reinmar and I helped build Elk Creek Terrace, when we, when we built that, the land was available. The conference center was very generous, the, the acreage was there. So we took advantage of that. In this situation, which is unique, we're talking about the downtown Cannon Beach, some of the highest valued real estate in the, in the state probably. So it's not analogous.
But you're, they could build six units without help and--
And, and we would have two less affordable housing units.
That's true.
They'd have to go to Nihalem or Wheeler or Astoria. You don't, you don't, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important as a public policy.
I think it's important too. But I'm just saying that I, I think that there's an odd juxtaposition here that I'm not quite understanding. That if you have a project in mind ahead of time and you want to change, change things, get a variance to meet that project, and then you jump to the conclusion that without doing that, you're hurting the chances for workforce housing, that doesn't make logical sense to me.
Well, that's, that's certainly not true, but-- Any other questions?
Thank you. And then Reinmar, after--
I, I can wait for rebuttal. I think that's--
Yeah. Yes.
I'm going now.
Yep. You're up.
I'm going now. Elena Giger, P.O. Box 474. You know what? I think Mike Clark is to be commended for trying to do what he's doing. Our community has continued to say, "We need workforce housing. We need affordable housing." Many of the citizens who live here, quite frankly, they don't own a car. They ride a bike and they do make minimum wage and work in our service industries. I, I think, I strongly encourage you to make this exception. Please don't confuse residential parking with the parking for our visitors. They are really separate entities. And we say we want it, but every time we turn around, our community is stomping on affordable housing. City Council refused to make an exception for three apartments above a marijuana shop, which, you know, agree with it or don't, they are three affordable housing units that now sit vacant. And so Mike is trying to, quite frankly, put his property where his mouth is and where our community is in providing housing for workers. My, my husband's nephew is able to work for Coaster and live in this community because Mike has some housing available for workers. Not just Coaster people, but, you know, food servers and bartenders and retail workers. And to give up three parking spaces should not be a crisis to allow to have eight affordable units for people to live in. You either are for the affordable housing in this community, or you are just all talk and no action. I encourage you to, to agree to those terms. He's going to make sure that they're not short-term rentals, they're not going to be condo-wise, they will remain apartments for people who live and work and pay taxes and support our community.
Any questions for Ms. Giger? Are there statements from, pardon, from other proponents?
Box 246, Cannon Beach, Oregon. I definitely have noted that affordable housing is a main concern of the council of Cannon Beach. Every time we come down here, we're listening to the council pushing in one form or another to get affordable housing. We at Breaker's Point are always looking for affordable housing to help out our residents there. So I think that you have an opportunity here that's pretty rare. You have to look at the efficiency of a gregarious building. Building a single-stage building is nowhere near as efficient as a gregarious building multi-leveled. It is far more efficient. You get much better bang for the buck. You know that when you're dealing with insurance companies, time is of the essence. Because this fourplex burnt down, we now need to get this moving because the insurance companies are obviously providing some money. Now, I know that Mr. Clark has a very credible Coaster company that can do the work, and I know that he has the finances to complete it. And I think that we should support him in doing this. And I think it's a very, very small variance that he's asking for. And especially to hear somebody come up and say, "I will take a deed restriction," that is very, very telling. Anybody that owns a property and says, "I am going to limit the uses of this proposal with a deed constriction," shows to me that he's 100% committed to what he's asking for. And I ask you to please approve this this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Francis? Thank you. Any other proponents of this application? Are there opponents of the application? Are there opponents of the application?
I just wanted to say that Jan Seibert-Worm, PO Box 778. I have been very confused from the last month's meeting when Rhine-Mar brought what I thought was a proposal in regard to the Sea Lark apartments and the R3 zones throughout the whole community that would be changed. Okay? So I was also thinking that that was going to happen in January, that meeting. So I've been trying to understand the difference between this application now and that code amendment suggestion. So I guess, I don't know if you folks are confused about it, but I find that it was very confusing last month. And so I guess my concern is if you're not really clear tonight about the difference, then I would ask you as a body, a public body, to, to continue the hearing until next month. You could do it in many different ways. And you could just accept written testimony by then, and you could make your decision next month. Because I know your meeting is going to be really full with the other business of the R3 zone. But I'm confused, and I am for affordable housing. I'd like to say on the record that it's not just rhetoric. And I don't believe it's really anybody in this community that is against affordable housing. It's really how and where it's done. So...
Jan, are you opposing the, the application for reducing the number of apartment places that are being required? Because that's really the issue.
And I guess what I'm saying to you at this moment, because of my confusion, I am torn because I am not clear with the separation of these two issues. And I hope that you are all more clear, if you're going to vote on this tonight, that you're more clear about it than I am.
I, I think we are. And I, you and I are going to be talking about other things a hundred times, and I think I can make your prayers even. On the other hand, is there anybody else here who has a question or, or response to this issue?
No, I mean, I, I take your point that this has been stirred into a mix that it's hard to separate out.
Yeah. And it could be a potentially huge, huge change to our community, even though, yes, we do want affordable housing in some way, shape, or form. So I just don't, I don't honestly know if this particular moment with this particular apartment building going to an eightplex is the answer. So I'm going to have to trust you guys tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions or replies? Okay. Any other opponents of this application? Okay. Is there a staff response at this time?
Yeah. If Jan was asking for a continuance, and this is the first evidentiary hearing, she's entitled to it.
Okay. Was that a formal request?
I'm leaving it to you guys. If you feel you need it, to make your decision.
Okay. Would you come up to the lectern for a moment so we could clarify this? Thank you for pointing that out. The rules are that if a, I don't remember whether it was participant, which you are by coming up and, and speaking at the lectern, requests a continuance, that the commission must grant that continuance. And I'm asking, are you formally requesting that and thereby...
I'm, I'm asking you to, when you make your decision, if you decide to try to make it tonight, that if you need more time, you do the continuance.
Okay.
I'm asking you...
You're putting it back on.
I am. I am. I'm trusting you to make that.
You're, you're not yourself formally requesting?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, what, that issue, Mark. Okay. Does the applicant wish to make additional statements?
I'd like to respond to a couple of things, if I may. So I, I think it was a good question. I'd like to respond about Elk Creek Terrace and Shorewood being successful projects and with, with the amount of parking they have. A couple of things that I would note. Those projects were built with substantial federal subsidies in the form of low-income tax credits and other financial instruments that are not generally available. And so it's a totally different environment. Elk Creek Terrace was built in 1980. Shorewood was built in 1990. So these, these were heavily subsidized by several federal programs. I know Shorewood also had rural development grants. We're talking about something very different here. We're talking about a private property owner who's trying to build an affordable project for the workforce housing. So that would be my answer to that. Just more generally, again, you have to trust me on this. There are studies that show that every, every parking space, so if you require two and only one is needed, raises the price of rent somewhere between 12 and 20%. So there, the effect of off-street parking is substantial. In terms of, I think, in terms of, if I may suggest, I think in terms of the legislative quasi-judicial, I think Mark spelled it out pretty clearly. You know, ideally, sure, Mr. Clark would have liked to have worked through your legislative change process and see what happens. But it was pretty obvious from the first meeting and others that this was going to be a long discussion, and there simply isn't time to do it. So, but I think it's pretty clear. This is a quasi-judicial application. There's a very specific proposal before you. We've submitted evidence that we think meets your criteria, and we ask you to act on it tonight. Where you go with a legislative decision down the road, that's, that's for you and the city council and the community to decide. So they are two different things. Some of the, some of the evidence that you heard is similar, of course, because some of the arguments are the same, but they are different. Jan said it's important how and where workforce housing is done. I can't imagine a better location. The property's zoned R3. All the criteria in the zoning code are met except for the parking. It's right next to downtown. It couldn't be more convenient. How? You've got a private individual willing to step up and build this housing, which I think is the framework that we're going to have to work in from now on. I know this isn't directly a criteria, but since you've kind of opened up the questioning on it, the federal government has been stepping back from affordable housing since the 80s. And evidently, from what I've read about the latest tax bill, they're going to keep doing it. So Cannon Beach and other communities is going to have to rely on private individuals to figure out ways to do this. This is one private individual that's found a way to do it. So that's the answer to Jan of how and where. And I think that's it. Thanks very much.
Any questions? Thank you.
So I know this, what I would like to say is not, is it's related to this building, and it's related to the, to how important it is that a decision is made tonight. I'm the last person that wants to force anybody to do anything, but I would just like to explain the misconception about insurance. Because most of us, if we have a home or we have a business, we have replacement insurance. And until you have a disaster, like your house burns down or your building burns down, you don't really know what replacement insurance is. In the case of a business, in this, in this particular building, it was insured for $900,000. It burned down. We had it assessed at what it would cost, not assessed, figured out, estimated what it was going to cost to put it back. And the cost to put it back with the current code, with, with the current code was over $1 million. So who's going to pay for that? The issue here is that how much did I actually get from the insurance company? Well, I got $750,000. So if you're, if you have a $900,000 insurance policy, you have over $1 million building you have to replace. How come you only got $750,000? Because replacement cost means you have to replace it before they give you the difference between your insurance policy and the depreciated value. So they took that building built in 1976. They depreciated it down to $750,000. They gave me that money. I have that in account. How do I get the other $150,000? I have to build the building back. Okay, well, that sounds fine. How long is it, how long do they give you to build it back? They give you until February of 2018, 2019. Because I have to start in March to get this to be finished in time. So then you say, well, what about the, the code? And I, I was going to go a little long because I was going to, earlier, and I was going to mention about the fact that if you go over there and look now, it's a concrete slab-on-grade. That's no longer permitted in the code. It's in the flood zone, which you can't build a building at that height. So now that we've got this far, we have to tear all that concrete out. We have to lift the building up two feet. We have to put in a foundation that allows for flood doors and flow through water because that's part of the deal. Well, how much does that cost? Who's going to pay for that? Well, the insurance company pays for that because I have replacement cost. But that timing is in December of 2018. So before the building is even completed, I have to prove to the insurance company that we have built the foundation, that we put the fire sprinkler system in that they're going to pay for. That can't be something we just do later. It has to be done and completed and all the receipts submitted in December of 2018. This isn't going to work unless I get started in May, March. And if you look at March and you look at today, you go, well, there's plenty of time there. Well, there isn't because we've got to go to design review. We have to have the potential for issues that may come up at design review and get those resolved. Then we have to get a building permit and get started. So the only point I wanted to make here is that if, if we need, we, you, I would request that you make this decision tonight because any type of continuance is going to make it nearly impossible for this to be affordable. The more this building costs, the more, it doesn't make any sense to be charging the affordable housing rates and the workforce housing rates, which are based on the average median income. I know Mark has those numbers. I think one's 125% and one's 80%. But at the end of the day, I don't want to finish a building that I'm charging $1,400 a month for when it's supposed to be 900. And that's what's going to happen if I end up having to build this by myself without all these insurance proceeds. So I'm not sure that you, if you can take that into consideration, we're talking about parking spaces, but urgency is an issue. And we've been working on this very hard with, up to this point, with all of the city people, the fire, life, safety, the, the, excuse me, the front and back easements, all the landscaping, the partition in the, in the property, because the Sea Lark IV building will be partitioned off the Sea Lark V. All of that has to be done before I can get a building permit. So it's, we got to keep, we got to keep this project moving, and I would really appreciate a decision tonight. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Don't you have to wait till the January, till January anyway to see whether the, you know, there's going to be a change in the, in other words, to see if you can even build the eightplex? Just go up to three levels?
No.
This building meets all the standards.
So it's, it's just a two-story building?
The, the building, it's a two-story building. It meets the building height, meets the lot coverage, landscaping.
This is the only thing that you have to have, is this variance for...
Correct. Correct. It's for the three off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
Nope.
You already answered my question.
Okay. Anybody see anything that we need to do before closing the hearing or public testimony?
Okay. I just wanted to ask Mark a question. So this building, this proposed building, has nothing to do with the change in the C3 zoning?
It certainly wouldn't. If those changes get adopted, it won't benefit from it because this design complies with everything except parking.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question. Okay. The public hearing is closed, and we're moving to consideration.
Okay. I just want to say, I really take issue with the false equivalent drawn between being against low-income and workforce housing and not approving this variance. I mean, I'm not saying that I think that the variance should be, should or shouldn't be approved. I'm not even talking about that. I just don't like that false equivalence. In other words, if you don't, if you don't approve this, then you're against workforce housing or you don't want to see it happen. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a very fair way of looking at it. And the other thing I have a problem with is the survey done up in Elk Creek because I happen to have worked up there, teaching English as a second language, and looked for places to park there at night, desperately looked. At 8:00 in the evening, a great deal of the people who live in that complex are at work in the service industries, working in hotels or restaurants. And so I don't think that going up there, I'm, I'm really taking issue with that particular survey that was done because I've been there a lot myself and had trouble finding any place to park. That being said, I, I'm not saying that that influences necessarily or should be a deciding factor in whether we approve this variance or not. I'm just saying that I think, I, it bothers me that, that this parallel has been drawn. And I feel, I kind of feel like, you know, I'm being backed up against, well, you don't, you know, you don't approve of, of workforce housing if you don't approve this. I mean, I just don't like that, that posture at all because the two things are not necessarily parallel. And the other thing is, is that going up and looking at parking, a parking lot at 8:00 at night in the summer months, when this is high tourist season, is not a good indicator of how many parking spaces are used.
Another point I think that should be made is that we seem to slide back and forth between workforce and affordable as a descriptor of whatever kind of housing the city is interested in pursuing. And I think there's a lot of difference between what, the meaning of those two descriptors.
Well, I really appreciated Mr. Clark putting a stipulation on it that it would be a public money for workforce housing and that it would not be rented as any kind of a vacation or what have you. I think that's a huge gift to what he's...
Oh, I, I agree with you. Yeah. I, I think that's something to consider.
Right. And I feel the city really needs some housing for workers.
I do too. That doesn't mean that, you know, I, I don't see necessar, I don't, I mean, it's a much bigger picture than this one application. The whole issue is.
But I think, you know, the reason we're here is to make a decision. Is this worthwhile? worthwhile granting this variance? And it's got to be granted based on what currently is, on what it might change to three months from now. And my feeling is, I think it's still worthwhile to approve this variance.
It seems to me that the, the issue is, are, are we concerned, to me, the, the question here, am I concerned that, in fact, this is going to result in people coming home to these units and not being able to find a place to park, and therefore parking on Hemlock or some other place where they're not living, and how many, and they're, and they're not parking in the, in the lot across the street that's properly for people who are doing business in those businesses? And there's a question of what we, what we think is going to happen, which is, I guess, that's the kind of question we have a lot of the time. And we have limited information of uncertain dependability, like a lot of things that we decide in life. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that's, that's the question.
Well, you know, the, for the last 40 years, I would say that, you know, the two pillars that make Cannon Beach what it is, is the parking requirements and the height of buildings. And so when you start chipping away at that, then somebody else could surely say, well, you granted that, so why can't I do that? You know, my feeling, my feeling that the suggestion is to the city, in terms of trying to have affordable units, is to look at the RV park, which gets used only a few months out of the year, and convert that space into low-housing units. Seems to me that would be, you have the utilities there, you, you, you've got the space there, that the way to address their, the city council's need for wanting to get more, you know, 24 more spaces, that, that would be the suggestion that they should look at, is eliminate part of the RV space, which is only used for a limited part of the, of the year, and, and use that space for low-income, smaller units.
Following that line of thought, what does that lead you to, as far as an answer to tonight's question?
Well, I'm just saying that if, if they think that, that the city has been addressing this forever and ever, I haven't heard anybody say, why not convert that space into affordable housing units, rather than having it, and also, if that is affordable housing units, the city is getting, and the people that are using those units are getting money every month, not just for the summer months. So to me, it makes much more sense, since the city owns that space, to convert that into the housing units.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing that as being an, an argument to reject the application. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I, I think, I think, I think when somebody brings up a vote, you'll find out soon enough.
But do you think the city has the money to actually build these accommodations on the RV lot? I mean, who's going to come up with the money to buy them?
Well, the, here again, if, if the city is serious about that, I would, I would say that, you know, a portion of that budget should be going towards building units every year. If it's four or five, or if it's however many, to get to that goal. It's a much cheaper way to, to go, because the utilities are there, the land is owned by the city, so we're really just talking about units that would be built or brought in to that space, which is, you know, we're not talking about buying land, we're not talking about putting in utilities, we're not talking about those costs. So to me, it seems like the direction that I would suggest the city go.
Well, and, and there are ways that the city could leverage that simply by, you know, working with a private developer who can build structure on the city property, you know, for X number of years, capture the revenue.
Yes.
And, and move on, and the city would be left with something, maybe structurally sound yet, even today.
Yeah, I mean, you take out a loan for a new house, and you pay it off in 30 years, why, the city, if they needed to do that, they would have that income that would cover that cost.
My, my real concern about this is, I can see, one request after another, to build an affordable apartment complex of size or another. If only we could get this variance or that variance from the, that's a plan of the code. And, and I'm, I'm kind of partial to this proposal, approving this proposal, because it has been framed as workforce housing. Affordable housing has no meaning. What's affordable to me would have been a lot more affordable than what I ended up, you know, buying and building in Cannon Beach. And I can, I can see we're slipping into affordable housing and suggesting that this is to expand available housing for people who either can't afford the outrageous prices that are being charged in this town. I would, I'm an excuse for changing the, the atmosphere of the city, the, you know, the compression of the city, the height of the city. And all, you know, all this is about is three parking spots.
That's the way I feel.
And, 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 and I think it, the, the, the trade-off, it's probably worth the risk. But, but I think it's something that we really have to watch. And I really fear what the city council was thinking about with playing around with R3 zoning and other changes. So, I mean, I, okay, I'm, I'm willing to move that we approve this proposal.
Second.
I'm going to continue the discussion, which is appropriate in the presence of the motion. I, I think Mark can remind us that there are legal, two, two, two things. That Mark can remind us that there are legal definitions of affordable housing and workforce housing, or I may be mistaken about that. And the other thing is, is I understand that what's being offered is something a little different, and that is a, a condition that will not be converted to condos or to short-term rentals. That certainly will be fine. If I remember correctly, that there are, are relevant definitions to this.
Well, yeah, workforce housing is not defined in our code. Affordable housing is defined in a couple of different documents, in slightly different ways, kind of depending on the context. I think Mr. Clark mentioned that it's, the affordable housing definition is based on percentage of the area median income. So you're right, workforce housing is not affordable, is not defined, often you'll see the terms used somewhat interchangeably, and it's kind of a loose way of doing it, but there you go.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't really know what workforce housing really is?
Well, I guess it's, it's housing for people who are, who are working here.
Working in the community.
Yeah. Working as a waitress, or a housekeeper, or working as a, you know, a store owner, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, sure. Hedge fund, hedge fund operator.
Yeah, right. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I guess that's where I'm, there's, there's no stipulation in, in any agreement that the housing would be kept, and what does that mean, affordable? I mean, obviously, you don't, how can you do that? I just don't, how, what assurance do we have that this is workforce housing that would really be available to people who are working in jobs that are, you know, that don't pay as high a salary as, you know?
We don't have insurance of that. But, I mean, as I said.
It's more, it's more available housing, is what it is.
We have an offer to have a condition, you heard the same thing I did, then, it won't be converted, the units won't be converted condos, and they won't be used for short-term rent. That, that's what we have insurance of. We won't have it, we, I don't, I think we discussed this a little bit at least, that we don't have any legal way to impose that it's on, that it's going to be rented to, to people with either, in general, people who are working here, or people in certain categories that are employed.
So what Joe said is right, it just means more available housing.
Yep.
Really, is what this is about. More available housing, not necessarily workforce housing.
I mean, I'm guessing that if, if he chose, Mr. Clark, had built one big house on that property, then whether that would pencil out better or worse than eight, eight little units, I don't know, but there could still be housing for.
I think you have to commend Mr. Clark for wanting to do this for the community, and anyone who owns as many businesses and properties as he does here, I think that he will certainly utilize them for the people that, that work for him. I mean, or help them to obtain housing, support them.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that should be considered, yeah. I don't know if that should be considered. That, that, that he's a good person, and may, and has done wonderful things for the community. I don't think that is part of our consideration.
What I'm trying to say is, he's a very reliable individual, or I would assume.
Well, this isn't a character thing. This is about, you know, I mean, if it was somebody else coming and asking the same thing, who you didn't know, and who you didn't admire, would you have the same opinion?
I don't really know, Mr. Clark, at all, but the fact that he is under the stock and fine restraints of the insurance company, and the fact that he has offered to put the restrictions on that he has to the property and the potential building, to me, seems that it's an opportunity for Cannon Beach to get some workforce housing. As, I mean, the city of Cannon Beach isn't necessarily, it's going to have to work hard to come up with a plan to provide housing on the RV property. And this is something that we will, the city will acquire in a short amount of time, and then help, certainly aid people to live here, possibly 10, if the unit is shared, and work in this city with the wages that they will receive.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just trying, I'm not trying, I'm pleading devil's advocate.
Okay, I'll, I'll take his personality. I don't know him, so I couldn't judge him.
Okay, so, I mean.
But it appears that way.
He has a great reputation.
He has a great reputation.
He does. And I'm just asking you, is, if it was somebody who had, who didn't have a great reputation, who you didn't know anything about, would you feel the same?
I would look into their background before I made that decision.
Is it too late to ask a question?
No. I don't.
What do you want to ask?
Well, in the October 26 minutes, Brian Marsh said that, and this is towards the end of page two of three, that Mr. Clark also was considering some housing in C1 And so, let's see, Bartle mentioned a second location that Mr. Clark owns in a C1 Zone that they would like to see considered for workforce housing, too. And so I'm curious where that is, and if there are other options, I mean, I know that it's particular to this because of the insurance situation, but will this also need to have unique parking, too?
Well, I'm, I'm aware of the site that they're discussing here, and, you know, it does, it has, it has its own set of challenges for development, and we've talked about how that site might be developed, so there's, so the caveat is, there's no site plan in front of you tonight, there hasn't even been a site plan in front of me, so we don't know exactly how that'll play out. But that's a challenging site, too, to develop. I don't know whether that results in variances to parking or some other standard. It's easy to see how it might, though, or it might be possible to design a project that pencils out and meets all the requirements. It'd be premature to, to really speculate on which of those is more likely, though. It's a challenge, I guess, the, the point about challenging sites here is, you know, Cannon Beach doesn't have a lot of vast supply of raw land, so the, the only sites left are challenging. That's why, you know, you're in business, basically, you're, you're seeing the results of, of, of a city that doesn't have a vast supply of green space available for development. We're looking at redevelopment of existing properties, those often have these kinds of challenges, so it's not surprising that you see, what you're seeing on this site, it, it wouldn't surprise me if you saw it on that C1 site also.
For discussion before we proceed with the vote. Okay, so hand back.
Commissioner Charles Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Janet Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Robin Ridley?
Undecided.
Commissioner Lisa Kirk?
Undecided, as well.
Commissioner Hank Johnson?
No.
Chair Robert Lundy?
Yes.
Okay, remind me what that counts.
I'm recording that as four yes, one no, two undecided. Is that correct?
So that, that's a passes, right?
Yeah, are those actually abstentions, then? Is that an accurate way of doing that?
You have a majority of the vote.
Yeah.
We have a majority of, for, for the record, is that, are those abstentions?
I'll put them as undecided, and somebody can...
No, they're not abstentions, it's undecided, because I don't have enough information.
I, I don't think that's a, a possible answer. I, I think it has to be yes, no, or abstained.
Then I guess it'll be no.
Okay. Robin?
I'd like to see us wait till next time to decide who the other one, that's really where I'd like to go with this. But...
In, in the absence of that as a, as a choice?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got that four to three, then?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So that decision...
For your consideration.
That decision document will go out tomorrow.
Okay. And you're going to have paperwork for me to sign at the end?
Got it here, yes.
Okay. I would like a, a short break, and I think there may be other people who would. Before we do that, did Mr. St. Dennis ever come back? As I commented, he's tall enough that I would expect to be able to see him if he were here.
He's not here now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's come back in not more than 10 minutes.
There's...
We're going to take, take a reset.
Why are we taking the break?
Because we've still got some informational and go to the order issues. Okay, let's get ready to deal with the additional matters of business here. Okay, come back to order. Next informational item is a tree report. Anything to comment on that?
No, this is a kind of a normal dead-of-the-winter report. We aren't doing much planting this time of the year.
I'm sure that we are all interested in the ongoing planning item on update on FEMA flood maps. We start out with the.
Yeah, last month you asked for an update on this. I've talked about it in the past, but there was a long period where just nothing seemed to be happening. But timing being what it was, I got this email a week ago yesterday, and it does seem that the project is moving forward, if at a glacial pace. If you read this very carefully, it'll kind of explain some of the reasons for the long pause in activity. None of them really pertain to us here in Cannon Beach. So if this schedule holds, I should get a letter of final determination, possibly even tomorrow. But that, but I've been told in a phone conversation, yeah, it might actually be the first week of January after everybody gets back from vacation. So, but anyway, if this letter of final determination comes out, let's call it in the next couple of weeks or so, that starts off a six-month clock that leads to the maps becoming effective. And that would, so that'd be sometime June or July, something like that. So there's two things that then have to happen. One is that that letter of final determination has to be issued. The six months have to expire without anything happening that can drive this off the rails. And then we have to go through an adoption process. In addition to being an insurance instrument, these are also a regulatory tool for the city, a part of your zoning ordinance. Any amendment to your zoning map, which this would be an amendment to, requires public hearing and a recommendation from you to the city council, and a public hearing at the city council, and adoption of an ordinance. What I'd like to do, since this schedule now looks like it's cautiously somewhat final, is start that process a little bit ahead of this. So say in March, schedule you for a public hearing on this, get that before the city council in May for a hearing, and then hopefully have the adoption occur, make the maps effective the same day the federal maps become effective at their level. So then there's no waiting for us to act. In the past, we've just waited until these become final, and then started our own process, which, as you know, can take three or four months under the best of circumstances. So that's the plan as it stands now. The, I put those maps on the table in front of you. The set on your right, the audience's left, is the current maps, and the set on your left is the proposed new map. They're slightly different format, and because of the way I printed them, they're different scales, but there they are.
Decent.
The new ones are on my side of the, yeah. So that's what you'll be, if this all goes apace, what you'll be looking at. The notice for this will be a citywide ballot measure 56 notice. Everybody gets notified. I don't know that we're going to expect a great deal of testimony on this, because for most people, it's kind of an arcane issue, but anybody who's paying flood insurance, it's not such an interest, an arcane issue at all. So I expect some testimony on it, but that's roughly the process that's before us and the status of the project as it stands now.
Thank you. Are there people who came tonight to be, to have something to say about this? Bruce, I know that you've been upfront on this. Would you like to speak first?
While Bruce is approaching, I did put a piece of correspondence in front of you on this, an email I got from Jim Oilla.
Yes.
This is not testimony per se, and actually, nothing you get tonight is testimony for the record on this. It's commentary that you can use to.
Thank you.
For whatever.
Bruce Francis, P.O., Box 246, Cannon Beach, Oregon. I would just really like to thank the body here for following through on the request that I made last month, because this is a very, very important issue. I have several people here who are paying exorbitant amounts, we feel, for flood insurance. And as you inspect these new maps, you will see that clearly, half of Cannon Beach is paying on bad information. And so the sooner we implement this, and it appears from Mark's report that we're on the road to success, I'd like to just thank you very much for pushing this through and making some headway and giving us some hope that now, maybe within nine months, we'll have this implemented. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other people, some people who would like to be heard? Steve, Mr. Patrick?
Frank Patrick. I live at 255 Northwest Torrevue, Portland, Oregon, 97229. The reason why this is a critical issue is because people don't understand that they're paying too much. And unless you people do something to help, they will continue to pay too much, because that's just the way life is. And so my concern for you started when someone called and said, you know what, we can't seem to get this flood insurance issue resolved. And when I looked into it, and it only took a few minutes, I think I spent about nine months on it, okay, because I'm slow, real slow thinking. And I'm telling you, it is absolutely devious, the way this has happened, because this has been known science now for, I don't know, Bruce, what you'd say, but probably.
Bruce?
Fifteen years. Bruce, I think it's been fifteen.
We're probably going to have you up here again, but if I can hear you, then you're talking too loud. And I could.
In other words, here's the point. If this were an airport, and you'd had all these elevations wrong, you'd be crashing airplanes, okay? But this isn't an airport, and it can all just go the way it is. But the issue is, you're paying because your maps are wrong, and this body is where it has to start. In other words, political process can actually adopt something that is now scientifically everybody knows and has known for years, so that the rates on FEMA insurance will drop. And you know what? There are some people here that if they knew that you were going to vote yes or no, they'd be happy or unhappy with you. But the nice thing about the political process is, nobody knows. I'm saying to this, make a difference for the cities, the people in Cannon Beach. If I went through all the premium costs, you'd be staggered, and it's huge. It's absolutely staggering. So please, please, keep moving forward on it. I echo what Bruce says, because if you guys don't do it, it won't get done. Thank you.
Are there people who would like to be heard on this?
My name is Stephen Sinclair. My P.O. box is 995. I live on the north end. My wife, Mary Ann, is here. We live at 603 East Sixth Street. We own the Wine Shack Building downtown, and we also own the Lazy Susan Building that's downtown. They're both on the same parcel of property. And when we purchased the property a little over a year ago, it was identified that the cost of our flood insurance was approximately $11,000 a year, and that was part of the cost of doing business. And then we saw the new flood zone map, and the flood zone was changing from a high-velocity zone to basically no flooding expected zone, what they call XX. And so we will still purchase flood insurance, but it'll be less than $1,000 instead of $11,000 a year for us. So the property owners, it's a huge, huge difference we're talking about. I would ask each one of you commissioners to take a look at the map and see the differences, and everywhere you see a piece of property downtown changing color and changing zone from a VR to a XX, just guess $10,000. Just guess $10,000 of savings for that property owner. Based on listening to conversation this evening, I'm kind of concerned about the hearings in March and April of 2018 about this issue, because from my expectation and from my understanding of doing the research, they're really, it's just a thumbs up or thumbs down. It's not going to be renegotiating any of these property lines and the flood zones. It's just a thumbs up or thumbs down vote, if I'm correct, based on my research. I think this is extremely important for the business owners and the future of the downtown community.
Thank you. Are there people who would like to be heard on this? Okay, let's see.
Lady Jagir, P.O., Box 474. So my husband and I own ReMax Coastal Advantage, and we have several clients who do own commercial property downtown. And again, I'm speaking on their behalf. This is really so wonderful that you're taking advance notice to start this process. These maps are FEMA maps, and so really, it's just going to be a matter of the city saying, yes, we agree. But it's vital to the continued, you know, success and thriving of our downtown to get these adopted as quickly as possible. I think it's not just downtown that they affect. I mean, there's, you know, some other properties, I believe, if I'm right, that will benefit from this, and people will still have flood insurance, just the cost of it will be significantly less. So I encourage you to keep this process moving forward as smoothly and as quickly as possible, and thank you.
Anyone else, sir?
Scott Schneier, P.O., Box 755, Cannon Beach. I'm a former insurance executive for a large company, and one of the things that people are missing is that on the FEMA, you're limited about how much insurance you can buy. You have a certain limit, $250,000. With commercial insurance, when this thing changes, you can buy much higher limits for a lot less money. So people can protect their property actually better than on the FEMA plan. So need to note that.
Can you point us at someplace where we can read about that at more length to understand it better?
At greatest point, we buy $20 million worth of coverage, which you couldn't have on the FEMA. Properties that aren't part of the FEMA program.
Is there an easily understood place? I'm interested in understanding this, because I have flood insurance on my home, that's got a pretty low ceiling, as far as how much coverage.
$130,000 and a small number on your comp, that's the thing that being the law. Commercial insurance, which involves a surplus finance policy, is usually basically your personal property.
Is a commercial insurance company allowed to sell me flood insurance?
If you're in Zone X, yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know whether I am or not.
Your house is in Zone X, and it actually won't change under this.
Okay, thank you. And thank you. I'm not sure I completely followed that, but I appreciate your.
If you're in Zone X, you don't have to lie to the city.
Okay. Other people who have something to say on this? Going? Going? Gone, okay. Go to the order, planning, commission, annual report.
The city council, for the first time, at least in my tenure here, has asked all of their boards and commissions to prepare an annual report. So that includes you. So this is what I've done, is kind of a summary of last year's activities and a primer on what you do. You're a little different than most of the other boards and commissions. You have a very distinct statutory authority to make final decisions. Most of the boards and commissions you can think about, you know, Public Works, Parks and Community Services, are advisory to the council. You, at times, are advisory, but most of your actions are actually final. So this is the report I came up with. This is not something you have to adopt if you want to wordsmith this. You've basically got a week and a half or so until I have to turn this in. So I guess what I'd say is, take a look at it, give me any changes you want, and I'll, if I don't hear from anybody, I'll turn this in on the second.
You've never seen me give up an opportunity to say something.
I'm inviting you to wordsmith this.
Looks good to me.
Dead last.
Yeah, okay.
I'll email it out to everybody in an editable form, and then send out the final product also, if that's okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I, oh, from, I'm just asking, what's going on with the Nicholson property?
I've talked to a fellow who's looking to buy one of the potential lots. I've talked to him two or three times now. Other than that, in the last month, I can't think of any activity.
So there's no deadline, there's no timeline imposed on the living wall or anything? It can stay the way it's ever?
No, they need to finish that, but they haven't, I guess it gets triggered when they come in for their next thing, whatever that will be, which will be some building permit for something, and we'll have to say, where are you on the living wall here before I issue that permit?
Oh, and that's what will happen?
Yeah, I think that's likely. You know, sometime this winter, in the dormant period, when you might be putting plants there, I'll ask them what's going on, because I don't want to, I've been in this position on other projects where you wait till sometime in the spring to ask about landscaping, and they're like, ah, it's too late to plan now. So I don't want to get in that bind. I want to ask them early, but.
So have you been by and looked at it?
I haven't been by in, probably before Thanksgiving was the last time I was up there.
Last time, it looked like there were some weeds growing, some of them, but that was about it.
Nature takes.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Anybody have objections to my question? Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.